We're going to go to the Policy Committee for the Strategic Plan, Mission, Vision, Values, and Priorities First Read.
So I'd like to invite Lisa and Katie from Point North, two of the consultants working particularly on the strategic planning process. I see that Jill is online representing Group Four who is working with them, but also focusing on the Facilities Master Plan. So you'll hear more from Jill at next month's meeting. So tonight's meeting is to look at the draft, Mission, Vision, Values, and Priorities as a first read. We will not be voting on this, but this is a lot of the work that's gone into crafting this will really help drive some of the other work we bring back to you in the full plan. So with that, I will turn it over to Lisa and Katie.
Thank you, Jennifer. My name's Lisa Keho Kaloli Shower, and I'm joined by my teammate Katie Dai. We are thrilled to be here. So appreciate the opportunity with the trustees and with Jennifer and the admin team to walk through where we are right now. So we'll provide a bit of an update and then we'll open it up for any questions. So as we get started, you can see on this first slide, really just a beautiful design. And so this is a little bit of what's to come. Today, we're focusing on the structure of the Strategic Plan, the flow, and the words that represent thousands of community comments and inputs. And you'll see the strategic planning process will be wrapped up in December, but it's time for us to start to break up pieces of that for you today.
And if I may, the design itself is done in-house by our Communications and Marketing Division, and you will hear more about that design next month and what it represents. Just a hint, there's a quilt in it.
We had two of the members of the Next Chapter, three of the members. We had two online and one in person that joined us to share a little bit of feedback on the process so far. We wanted to really make sure that you had an accurate picture of all of the participants from that Next Chapter Advisory Committee, three of which are members of this Board of Trustees. So we have appreciated the work that this group has done. I think it's important to share that this group represents staff, board, foundation, friends of the library, business, education, government, workforce, community-based organizations, and students. So we have a wide variety of input that makes up this group. This group is simply an advisory group. So each time that we meet with this group, which we've met four times, we have one fifth final committee meeting. We're seeking their input, and then we're coming back, we're doing that work, we're having conversations with the admin team, and then we're refining and bringing back to you recommendations. So with that, I will go ahead and turn it over to Katie to talk a little bit more broadly about our strategic planning process.
Thank you, Lisa. So before we get into the draft content, we want to share a little bit about how did we get to where we're at right now in our drafting process? Lisa shared a little bit about this process being one that started with community engagement. So over the summer, we alongside the FERL team went across the region to various sites, various libraries, tabling across the region, having conversations both with community members, with staff, and with patrons of the library to have a conversation around what does the library currently mean to them? What do they like to see in the future of the library moving forward? And what's their feedback around that? In that process, we gained over, as Lisa said, thousands of inputs that were corroborated together into feedback. Analysis was done, and that was shared with you all, and update was given with you all back in the summer. Lisa came and shared a bit of an update on where we're at with that. That feedback was given to the Next Chapter Advisory Committee. The Next Chapter Advisory Committee looked at all of that feedback from the community and then put together themes. What are we hearing? What's missing? What are we hearing from community in terms of hopes, wishes, and what the library should focus on in the next five years? That feedback was then looped back to the admin team, and the admin team looked at that feedback and the recommendations from the advisory committee and the full engagement data and started to draft what priorities for the next five years should look, sound, feel like based off of all of that engagement. That has been an iterative process back and forth over time. So from the admin team looking at recommendations from the advisory committee and then back to the advisory committee, here's some work that's been... I think what's important before we get into the draft content is who is this final plan meant for? What are the audiences of a strategic plan? Strategic planning can sound kind of cold and corporate, and it's a document, it's going to live on a shelf, and are we really going to reference it? Our vision and what we heard from you all in our conversations is that that's not what you wanted. You wanted something that could help drive decision-making, that could help align the priorities of the work moving forward, and that you wanted it to be rooted in community feedback. That's what has guided this process and what has really been attributed to the final content or the draft content you're going to see today. The audiences of a strategic plan, what's really critical here is that a strategic plan, first and foremost, helps really align staff and organization. So as we went out to staff and we asked them, what is the future of the library? What are their hopes? What's working well? What's maybe not working so well? We use that feedback in our inputs as well. But what's important is that a strategic plan, particularly vision, right? What does the next five years look, sound, feel like for us? Where do we want to be? Mission, what does the everyday daily work that we do in our branches across the district look, sound, feel like to advance that work? And then how do we do that? That's rooted in our values, right? So a strategic plan really helps guide staff across the district and the daily work and actions they take to advance the work at the library. It's also really important for funders and donors. So people who are investing their dollars into the work of the library, into the mission of the library, that is really important to know, what am I investing into? What is the organization committed to? Where are you going? A strategic plan provides clarity around that. Community partners, friends, and volunteers, really helpful. How can I jump in? How can I help advance something? Having a clear strategic direction around, again, where the district is going for the next five years provides clarity for friends groups, for volunteers, and for community partners who want to engage in this work alongside you all. And then, of course, community members. So as you continue to report out the progress that the district is making, as you will, in board sessions or in conversations, you can reference the strategic plan. You can reference the stated objectives and clear measures of success that you've committed to in order to continue to advance that mission. Community hub for literacy, learning, and civic life, where every person thrives through knowledge, curiosity, and connection. Mission, we champion equitable access to literacy and lifelong learning for stronger, more connected communities. Values, integrity. We earn public trust by leading with transparency and stewarding our resources with care, upholding the right to intellectual freedom and access for all. Connection, we create welcoming spaces, connecting people to ideas, resources, and one another, so everyone we serve is seen, valued, and respected. Lifelong learning, we build literacy, nurture curiosity, and encourage discovery, embracing exploration, creativity, and growth at every stage of life.
These are the ways in which the FERL libraries guides the work. The actual work fits into what we like to think of as a set of priorities. And these priorities will include goals and objectives, and as Katie mentioned, measures of success, and that final strategic plan. We want to make sure that that foundation is so strong that no matter who you talk to within the library or within the community, it's clear what you're setting out to do, who you're serving, and why, which is a bit of that mission, vision, and values. The how we achieve that are the priorities that are laid out here. So what's important in how we're presenting this is these are kind of the top level four priorities that all of the goals, objectives, and measurements fall within. We're really only going to talk today at the high level with these four areas, not get into any of those details. Those details will show up at your next meeting where we'll have evolved the draft. The priorities are really centered on the work, and the four interconnected priorities guide how we design spaces, develop programs, collections, and services, invest in technology, and support our staff. The four priorities that I'll go ahead and read are really truly informed by that iterative process that Katie mentioned. The first is operational excellence, fostering a culture of learning, accountability, and continuous improvement that unites our staff, systems, and spaces to deliver exceptional service and lasting impact. Community connection and inclusion, building meaningful connections and advancing equity through partnerships, inclusive access, and welcoming spaces where everyone can learn, share, and belong. Library programs, collections, and services. Develop and deliver inclusive, engaging offerings that reflect community interests to inspire learning, strengthen connection, and enrich the lives of people across all ages and backgrounds. Spaces and technology, creating welcoming, innovative, and adaptable environments to connect people, expand access, empower discovery, and meet evolving needs in our communities. So together, these priorities ensure we offer inclusive, engaging, and responsive experiences that spark curiosity, support lifelong learning, nurture creativity, strengthen social connection, and promote equitable access for people of all ages and backgrounds. So these are the four primary areas of that strategic plan, and we'll build out the additional goals and objectives. But we thought it would be important for you to kind of see where we're at and see how this all builds together. We also know how important words are. Words share meaning based on your lived experiences, based on your identity, based on your profession. There are a lot of reasons why a word may mean something to each of us, and it may be different. What we thought was really important is to share with you a glossary of terms that activate the words within mission, vision, values, and those strategic priorities. So that's what you'll see on the next two slides. We also want to ensure that the strategic plan does reflect the community's voice and that the words that we've heard through the community are reflected in the strategic plan and in a shared understanding and commitment that these words can have throughout this five-year strategic plan. So there are two slides here that go through some of the words that we know may need further explanation and then the draft definition for each of those words. So you understand the context in which they're being used and why those words matter. So with that, we have gone quickly through our entire set of slides. We really wanted to make sure that you had a real good understanding of the process again, as well as the draft content that's before you today. So we're not asking for any action, but we are open to any feedback. And as I mentioned, there are three members of that Next Chapter Advisory Committee on the Board of Trustees. So if there's any feedback that you have as well, we want to make sure that we're reflecting that in the work that is presented before you today.
So I do have a question about the data. I'm a data girl. Where are the numbers? Where's the community feedback? Where, how many people said what? I would love to see that type of information. I'm kind of disappointed it's not here for us tonight because we're going to be making a decision based on community feedback, board members, things like that. But I'm not seeing any, you know, data provided, so I kind of thought we were going to see that tonight.
So I did present this summer, and I did share some of that data. I can bring back that presentation. Was your data was missing?
Well, you still collected further community input after the summer presentation, I believe. And so I was hoping to see, you know, some of the popular words, the process you went through a little bit. You know, I hear that a lot of the information was gathered on Post-its. And so how many did you gather for the word books? You know, like more, I know that you must have it because you weighed it and you created a document for us. So I was hoping to see more of that type of thing.
We are happy to provide that. We have a community engagement summary that has been completed that has a high-level summary as well as some of those themes, but it really is the collection of the data. But I presented that this summer, so there wasn't a lot of additional outreach other than the Next Chapter Advisory Committee.
It was all completed at that point?
The survey was not 100% completed at that point, but it was maybe a week away. So it would have been whatever was, yeah, pretty close.
Okay.
And on our website, and maybe I'll just tell you so they don't have to struggle, there is a page on our website on the strategic plan. If you scroll down to the bottom of the website, it's called Strategic Priorities, and it will take you to a page about the strategic plan. And I'm trying to see, it has kind of all that we've done. But I was trying to look to see, yes, the presentation that was done at the August board meeting is right there, just that part of the meeting. That was when it was almost complete. Yes.
So my other question is, if we have suggestions tonight, who will be revising this?
That's a really good question. So I think at this point, yes, asking questions or providing some direction of what you'd like to see, it would be, at this point, the core team, which is a section of the admin team and Point North working together to craft it. Because the NCAC, their last meeting is Wednesday. It is their celebration time of all of that they've done to participate through the process. And then they are still always going to be ambassadors for this process, but they will not be meeting any further. So any further changes would have to be done between the admin team with the assistance of Point North and coming back to the board.
Okay. I, in my first meeting, I'm frustrated. My biggest request was to remove the word equity and find a more neutral word. That, we've had several discussions, and I can, anyway, we've had several discussions trying to get back to more neutral language, more neutral environments, things like that. And I think people would probably agree that equity can be sort of a not-neutral word these days. It's also sort of ambiguous. You know, you can go back in our Equity Toolkit. I have the definition here. Jennifer wasn't even aware there was already an equity definition. We have, it's whatever, however I want, however you want to word it.
I was aware of it. That wasn't what we were looking at, so.
My point is, though, that it changes. You know, we need words that someone can look at a document and think, oh, they mean this. I mean, there's definitions of equity. There's just a lot of different ones. Is there not a more clear, more neutral word we could use? There's equitable access. I see that defined. You know, the definition sounds great. There's a billion other words in the world. We couldn't find one without equity. You know, that was my request to you when you consulted with me in the very beginning. I won't speak for the other word. I don't know who requested what, but that was mine. And my job as a trustee is to vote for this, and it's something I'm going to be held to. And I cannot vote for this the way it is. So I'm going to stop talking now and let someone else talk, but pretty frustrating.
Well, I would step in and say thank you for leading with that because those are my feelings as well, that I said all of that in the beginning when we had an interview. For the same reasons, that word has too many overtones. We also, we talked about in the Policy Committee that simple terms that are not, are easily understood by, no matter what your native tongue is, just very plain and simple, all are welcome.
I do believe that equity was heard multiple times in the community feedback. I've been sitting on the Next Level Advisory Committee. I understand that you would want to say that, and unfortunately, some of us have been at those meetings, so we have probably seen more than you have.
Oh, I'm sure of that.
I can think of no better standard to be held to as a Board of Trustee member than equity. I think it's very easy to think that it's too divisive a term or something, but our community is changing and growing. And when you're not a marginalized person, you don't realize how much you need that word in writing. I am a woman of color, I'm queer, I represent this community, and I hold that seat on this board seriously. And I saw the feedback. I went to multiple community tables. I saw their Post-it notes. I saw the feedback people left. They felt included. They felt like their voices had been heard. And if we say whitewash that word out of our statements, we end up having a whole proportion, growing proportion of our community. This area is becoming more diverse, and they start to see that from us. I don't want to vote in favor of that. Obviously, the board will vote in a majority, but I want to be on the side of equity. It matters. It really, really matters.
Can you define equity for me?
Equity is exactly, this definition is beautiful on this piece of paper.
I don't see a definition for equity. I see equitable. Define just equity, only equity.
Equity means that no matter your race, your identity, any other demographic factor, that you are welcome and included. I would wonder, what other words would you pick since you didn't have a chance to be on the next advisory committee? What words would you pick?
All are welcome. I'm not sure why you're throwing whitewash and things into it. All are welcome. Aren't we? Aren't we all welcome?
We are, and we also have to be a lot more specific about what that means.
Okay, why?
Because it matters.
All?
Yeah.
All are welcome. So.
Equally.
Okay. Equal. Let's use equal. That's a great word.
Right. So under the mission with equitable access, just to make sure, you know, I think that that says, we have libraries across the district. We can't do the same thing that we do at the Vancouver Library because of its size as we can do at the Stevenson Library. So equitable access really helps to define what that means. It's not about the people in that case. It's about the resources, the services, the programs that are provided in an equitable fashion. So otherwise, you could have a system that says, well, most of the people are in Clark County, very few in the other counties, so they get what they get. Everything's going to be focused here. That's what equitable access means, that we won't do that, that we will provide services to our full district in an equitable fashion. So I just wanted to clarify that because the suggestion you used doesn't fit there.
Doesn't fit into which part?
That's the mission one.
There's only one place that I found in this document where the word equity is used. So do you have a suggestion for a replacement word there? That would mean the same thing, because you can't put in that sentence, "all are welcome" doesn't really...
Well, I'm talking about the mission, right? This minute, equitable access.
Oh, you said equity.
Yeah, equity is down here too. I haven't got there yet. But we champion equitable access to literacy and lifelong learning for stronger, more connected communities. So equitable access, yes, we define it here. Is there really no other word than equitable that you can think of that fulfills that?
Equitable is also a problem, not just equity, equitable, because that means that...
Yeah, I'm just asking. So is that, is everybody fine with that one?
What, you asked a question?
Yeah, yeah.
I can tell you, we had lots of conversations and word searches and really looking at this because we heard some of the concerns from board members at NCAC. It wasn't the rest of the group. There was one other member of the NCAC. I want to be clear.
Okay.
So knowing that and knowing the board is who has to vote on this, we did go back and look at what other words could be replaced. And we did not find anything that really would replace these, this term, to really describe what we do.
Okay.
That doesn't mean it doesn't exist, Kristy. Like you said, there's millions of words. But I will say, we did our due diligence in really testing and exchanging words, and nothing would rise to the level of what we're trying to say here.
Okay.
Would you not want the members of our community to have equitable access to our resources?
Or what we've... Of course I do. That's an interesting argument people use, is you don't like the word equity, you don't want it for people. That's not true. I want a neutral word if we can find it, a more neutral word. Equitable access, the definition she sent is fantastic. I like it. If there's not a better phrase we can come up with. Okay, equity, so if you want to move on to the other one you found. The only use of the word equity is under community connection and inclusion, advancing equity. I do have a problem with that. We haven't redefined the word equity since 2011. And the definition, I mean, read it, because it's the only one we have to go by for FERL.
Do we have equity that's in the definition?
Advancing equity is in the glossary of terms. I have used just equity, and that seems to be different.
Oh, I'm sorry. In the document, it does say advancing equity under community connection.
Yeah. Which we're talking about equity, period. Not advancing, are you talking about, I'm sorry, probably not following.
In, under community connection, what you're speaking to, it says advancing equity and...
So taking intentional action to ensure fair access, treatment, and opportunity for all by removing barriers, addressing disparities, expanding meaningful participation in our community. So that's even different than what we had in 2011. So I just think it's weird to use words that we're going to be redefining regularly. I have a problem with the equity word. I just do, like, 2011's definition was wildly different than this year. So are we going to, how are people going to know what we're talking about?
What was the percentage of our population that were surveyed? When you went through all the different branches this summer, and what was...
Marie, that's really, you know, that's an unfair kind of question. We have 560,000 people that we serve. So we had 1,800 people fill out a survey.
Okay.
We had, was it 700 people that came to community conversations or tabling events, et cetera? So when you look at the percentage, it's going to feel extremely small. Is it representative? Sure. Is it scientific? No.
No, no.
We didn't pay for a scientific survey.
Just comparing what the population is.
I also want to remind the board that the staff was part of this as well. And so this is about how the staff do their jobs, how they have direction to do their jobs. The last strategic plan was one that we haven't talked about much. And the staff, I have internally provided them with strategic priorities for this year because we were in the middle of a process and they needed to have direction of what they were going to be focused on. But I think the important point is this means something to our staff as well. And so I'm not saying that those words can't change, but I have not, and this group has not, come up with better words to describe the work.
So I hear what you're saying. I think we agree on the idea behind the words, so it's weird. We can't find a different word to put in its place. Oh, sorry, let me just finish this thought here. One thing we hear over and over on the board is you have, you've signed this strategic plan, your mission, vision, and value, so it needs to be something, like, I didn't vote on the last one, so, but I'm still accountable to it. You know, this one I'm voting on, so they can say that to me because I did vote on it. So it needs to be something that I can stand behind. Go ahead, Olga.
You know, to say that nothing has been found to address the request for some different language. It's a little bit of a... There has been a lot of suggestion. There has been discussion. There have been many words actually offered up. But there is a very clear resistance to working that out. I have been, I went to one meeting here locally for the, you know, community engagement. I'm part of the Next Chapter Group. And, you know, it is not, it's definitely not a snapshot of our entire community. There's definitely a big bias there. There's definitely a minority of opinion there that's not being well-received. And we don't have to break into those details now, but I just want to highlight that if we are having a bit of a heated discourse even now, which is wonderful, thank God we can... a bit of a heated discourse even now, which is wonderful, thank God we can do that in America. Um, because where I'm from, you're not allowed to do that. But if we're having this much friction over language, A, it means it's really important to some people in one way and it's really important to others in another way. But if it's going to cause more conflict, if it's going to cause, you know, jumping to conclusions that, oh, if you don't take this on, you must believe this. I just want to invite us to take a step back to find neutral and common language that would still express these values. Because it doesn't mean we don't practice things, but if a word is isolating for some and upsetting to others, we need to be sensitive to that. Because we want to do that in some places, but not in others. And so if we're having, you know, if this is really a problem for people, just even in this room, I imagine it would be at large as well. And so wherever you land on it, I think it's just good public practice for us to step back and see where we can find more simple and neutral language. There were other words that were brought up to be not politically charged. I personally brought up the word hub being a word that doesn't land well for people that where English wasn't their first language. I'm a member of the Slavic community. And, you know, there was pushback even on that. And so I don't understand why we say we looked and, and there was seeking. The truth is, things were offered up and it was just rejected because there is a majority uh, opinion there that is dominating this process. And here we are. That's all I have to say.
Well, Olga, what I would say to that is that, um, yes, you've offered up different words. And as I said, we have looked at all different kinds of words. And it's not that we haven't heard suggestions, it's that they haven't risen to the same meaning and fell short of what we're trying to achieve. That, so if there are additional words, I'm going to also speak to the hub since you brought it up. One of the things that, um, we have done now is to run words through a service to really look at in other languages, the meaning. So Katie, if you want to speak to that.
Yeah, I'm happy to. Um, Olga, I do want to note that we were quite responsive to your request at the last advisory committee meeting to seek counsel on the translation and, and transcreation opportunity around language. And in that consult, um, we did arrive and receive both translated documents of this draft, um, content and transcreated versions. Um, and specifically asked for feedback around a few of the words that were in question, one of them being hub. Um, and we did not receive feedback that that specific word was in question. We asked for it translated in Russian, Ukrainian and Spanish. Um, and we're happy to provide what the result of those looked like. But we did want to advance that request that was, uh, made in that space because we certainly understand that there's a priority to ensure that, um, the content of this is accessible to the communities it impacts most.
Maybe just to add a little bit to that. So trans, transcreation is about, do the words mean the same in another language? Translation is the actual translation. So just so that we're clear and anyone that may be watching, we looked at both so that there wasn't just a literal translation of the words, there was understanding from a cultural perspective as well. So I think it probably is also important just to share that. Katie and I absolutely heard each of you and we also heard you say you wanted a community reflected plan. And while I think the advisory group is representative of the community, they're not the only community input. And so I'm happy to provide additional data if that's what you need to be able to feel like this isn't biased or with a very specific lens by either ourselves as the consultants or a group of twenty-six. I want to be really clear, there are thousands of inputs here. Quite a bit of data that has been accumulated. So Kristy, to your point, I think we have tried to ensure that we're loyal to the community we also live and work in. And so.
So I run in a lot of homeschool community circles. I am around a lot of families that don't trust the library, don't believe anything will happen, will not come to any meetings of the sort. It's also my job to help speak for those people too. And so there are many people that don't like equity word, you know, we all. It's, it's really interesting words, you know, we all want the same thing under the word on top. So I feel like we can do better. I feel like we can do better. What about for the mission? We champion equality of access, you know, to literacy and lifelong learning. I mean, if we, if we put effort in, I'm sure we could come up with something.
So equality of access.
Well, what was the other?
I'm just.
Yeah, just, yeah, go ahead. Yeah.
So you're okay with equality of access, but not equitable?
Right.
What, what's the difference for you?
So equal means that everyone has the same opportunity to go for a thing, to have a thing. Equitable means that we try to make everyone start at the same place, which is impossible as a library to promise that we're going to do that. I don't think it's our job to make sure everyone starts with the same type of thing. We don't even practice that in our pay. We don't have a bunch of people that make the same as you. We can't be equitable. It's kind of.
Would like to.
I'm sure that they deserve.
I think the concern about equal
Go ahead.
Is we, we can't, this is the mission about to provide these opportunities. Yes, it's equal in the fact that there are libraries around that everybody can walk into, but it's equitable of what's available. That's my concern, like we.
Is it equitable of what's available? We're offering the same things to every, you just said that like the the item library is not going to be in certain branches.
Think about.
That's not equitable.
Well, right, because it's equitable with what space they have available to do these things.
So I feel like, I just feel like I'm not sure how far we're going to get with this.
No, I, I think though it was just important to understand the difference for you. I'm trying to understand of those.
Understand.
Yeah.
Difference. The problem is people speak two different languages. People have different meanings for words. In libraries, I think we know this. So.
I, I like to understand.
Not done talking, I'm sorry.
Yes, but I.
I'm talking about equal opportunity. Equal opportunity. Equality means something different. So I mean, equity, sorry.
Equity means something.
Not helping to say what we do in the library. Yes, there's equal opportunity that an individual has. But what is our mission?
To give access for all. As far as the mission, we champion access for all to literacy and lifelong learning. Is that not true? Is that not what you're saying also?
But access for all does not speak to how we distribute resources across the district. So if you live. Well, it, it does, equitable access.
Okay. So what I'm getting from this is it needs more work. I can't vote for this as it is. Maybe I'm in the minority. I'm not sure. We'll see what happens next month. Oh.
Well, we haven't heard from everybody that's on the board yet.
Yeah, feel free to jump in.
Mary Ann and Irina, we, you know, we haven't heard from you. Olga has her hand up again.
Go ahead, Olga. Sorry.
Well, I'm just curious, Jen, if you could give us some examples and that can help us on, you know, further the discussion. Because, you know, equity is always, it, it implies a standard or a goal where something is measured. And so I'm just curious, like, what are some specific examples and how are we removing barriers? I mean, that's like a very socially active task. What does that mean in the library? What does that actually look like? And what are some measurable points of that, like examples that you can give us?
That is what we would be working on, bringing you under the priorities of defining the goals, objectives and measurements. So this is, this is what we're working on now. But if you just talk in general right now and you think about, um, things that we look at as far as our spaces. And where do we have libraries throughout our district? Are they in the population centers? Are they not? If they're not, how far do you have to get to go to the library to have access? And that's why we have bookmobiles in remote areas and we're adding another one. That would be an example of equitable access. We're trying to get access to people that are in remote areas. So we could go through all of our services and talk about those things. Certainly, you know, I believe everybody, um, comes to this with the best of intents. I will also say to you, I challenge you even, to go look at library strategic plans across the country. And you can say you don't care. This is our profession. I committed to the profession.
Who's saying they don't care?
The actions.
Okay. I'm going to interrupt you for a moment.
Yes.
I went to other, I went to this, no one is writing anything new. Even the ALA practically mirrors some of this stuff. So go to, yes, everyone's copying everyone. It's okay to be different and try to find something new that's more neutral that includes everyone and not alienates some people. Like, don't say that people don't care because I think by being on the board, we care.
Well, it's insulting to say that we're copying other language because that's not what has happened.
Okay.
My point was just that in the library industry and field, these words are commonplace because they describe the meaning of what we are trying to do. The politicized nature of what you're talking about, I'm not sure. What does equitable mean?
Not sure.
I'm not going to assume I know. What does equitable mean from a negative?
Saying you're not sure if it's politicized or you don't.
No, I'm not sure. What, what is it that is the negative connotation that's concerning you about equitable access?
So equity, equity means that everyone starts from the same place. That can't happen. We are not responsible for making sure everyone starts from the same place. I feel very strongly that if we really believed in equity, we would have different pay scales. I feel like we aren't doing what we say we're doing when we believe in equity. When we have people making barely over minimum wage, we have people making more. But that's the way it works because we give, um, pay based on merit, education, skill, need. You can't say we have equity when we have this type of, of plan in place. It just, it doesn't fit. Does that make sense? It doesn't look like it makes sense. So.
I understand what you're saying.
Oh, okay.
I still, I'm still not seeing how we perform equity. How are we removing barriers? Help me understand this. If this is like, this is like, this word, this theme is so big in all of this. Give me some thing that, how have we removed barriers?
I think I can maybe share some examples of how we heard you are currently providing equitable access across the district, at least in the conversations that we had. Your bookmobile is providing equitable access to regions of your service district that would not have the same equal access to a branch otherwise. So if you were just to have branches and not to have the bookmobile, we heard from people who rely heavily on your bookmobile that they would not be able to have equal access to the same programming or books at the library because it's harder for them to get there. They're immobile. They don't have license. Or, um, they're young and they're, they're unable to get there. So that was one way that we heard the district is providing equitable access is prioritizing resources to certain areas of the district to expand access to people who have a challenge, have a barrier getting into a branch. Another way we heard, um, around equitable access was your wifi. I think wifi sessions were brought up, which is quite a bit, right? So having an entire, uh, digital branch available for people who, again, might have mobility challenges or might have, um, challenges or barriers being able to get into a physical branch. So.
And we literally do not do that. We literally just took away all the wifi hotspots from like rural areas. We literally do not do that.
Your digital branch?
You're talking about wifi access. Like, look.
That's in the libraries that we're talking about or the bookmobiles.
We, we could go back and forth, back and forth. You can make some highlights and I can tell you how, you know, people can find all kinds of examples. It's just, the whole point is, this is just something that is too hot of a button to be pushing. And it would be wise for us to have some more neutral language that agrees with both sides. Because we actually are not meeting some of these goals that we are saying that we're doing. I know, because we, I live in one of these communities and a lot of times we do get told, this is the best you can get out here. And you have to be thankful, and we are. But we definitely are not prioritizing resources, like someone just said, to come to the communities that need it the most. We are absolutely not doing that. We're giving resources, but we're not prioritizing. That's just, this is just language that honestly makes it so we don't do the true work of, um, looking closer, looking deeper and responding. We're just congratulating ourselves for some stuff that we're truly not doing. And that's.
Suggestion. Can I step in, Olga? Access sounds like what we're talking about and we give the best access to all of the resources that we have, all of the locations. We can't make that equitable to everybody everywhere all the time. Is there a different way of verbalizing how we offer the access besides equitable? That seems, to me, that seems to be the hitch here. That's what we want to say is that we want to make as much available to the people that we're serving.
We do a phenomenal job just providing access.
Yes, we do, I think.
We do. I can do something.
Could say that differently.
In a week or two weeks or, or days. That's wonderful. Is it equitable? It's not. But we, I do have access. And so anyway, this is, you know, us doing like, arguing over semantics and language and things like that. But it's also a lot of emotion in this and there's a lot of personal values and politics and I honor where everybody's coming from. But it's, it's concerning to me that this is such an immovable, non-negotiable thing. It's concerning to me. And I'm disappointed at how quickly we point a finger and say, oh, you don't want this? You must be against it personally. As a refugee of a communist country, red flags. It's super uncomfortable for me how quickly that's happening. And how non-negotiable so much of this is.
Like. Oh, okay. I think Mary Ann is trying to talk. Go ahead, Mary Ann.
Take yourself off mute. You're on mute still.
Mute.
We hear you now.
Kind of focus, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, you're focusing on kind of one small little issue. I think that you do have a diverse population and don't close your minds to that, that you serve. The book needs, the access needs of a Puketat farmer versus a Vancouver commercial employee are going to be a little bit different. And I think you need to structure how you deal with these independent communities as long as you are trying to provide the kind of equal access within that community. But whether you provide that same access between a Vancouver resident and very rural resident may be very different. And I, I, that's just part of the structure you have because you have both a rural and a, um, urban type environment. And sometimes those have different needs.
Yeah, I agree with you. I, I don't think this is a small issue as we can see tonight. I, I think we, we, I totally agree. We have a diverse population. I think we need to provide equal opportunity to everyone across the board.
So can I go through and highlight where I think there's issues, just so that we have them?
Let, let Megan maybe or who else haven't?
Does anybody else have something to say?
Like, we just heard from Mary Ann.
Megan?
Irina and Megan. Do you guys?
I, I spoke. I, I don't have anything else to say.
Irina, did you want to say anything or should we just keep going?
It's, you know, it's interesting to hear all of this and really having just a lot of discussion already and a lot of disagreement. And when you mentioned about translation and, um, it's not only a literal thing and it's not only understanding, it's also mindset. And it's not only us, you know, Slavic people. You have to take care of people from China, people from Asia. The mindset of those people are very different. So, and people like Hub or. intellectual freedom and stuff like that. You have to keep in mind that it's not only younger population that we're talking to. It's also elder population of different cultures. So it is important. Every word. And having diverse, very diverse board members, we need to be agree on. Because if we not agree, I'm sure it's going to be even more problem outside of board meeting.
Did Marianne raise your hand again or was it still just up? I didn't notice. Okay.
No, I, I didn't. I, I think what we need to do is narrow down today, what we're trying to accomplish at this meeting. Cause we've, we've kind of broadened the scope to a pretty huge animal.
So if I could just go through each of the areas with all of you. I think that while Olga mentioned hub, that's still an issue for Olga. Is that an issue for the rest of you? The word hub?
No, but I don't speak any other language, so I don't.
Right, but I'm trying to get a sense of when we bring this back in December, we're trying to bring it back so that we can pass this. Which means four of you have to be on the same page.
Yeah.
Well, I would love all seven. Four of you have to be on the same page.
I work in a community college in East Multnomah County. It's one of the most diverse county areas and majority of our first generation students are not speaking English as a first language. And our student services building is called the hub. It's at Mount Hood Community College. So I think it's pretty well understood by a lot of populations. Mostly Spanish speaking, but Vietnamese and Russian Ukrainian speakers are the most common of our ESL students.
Do you guys see how this process is? You have a Ukrainian and a Russian speaker telling you right now. And it's a, it's a benign word. I, I mean, I love the word. I get it. But we're telling you as representatives of the community, hey, this is a word that it does not, is not part of simple language. It's kind of slang. Do you guys see how then someone goes and takes it to someone else to redefine it to tell us, no, we're wrong? Or I work here, so I know better. This is how the whole process has been. I just want that to be very clear and transparent.
I was just giving my personal feedback, Olga. You don't have to agree with it. That's fine.
That's fine. I'm just telling you, this has not been a perfect process. This does not represent everybody. We just have really a handful of voices plus some community feedback that was put with stickers and sticky notes to capture very specific rhetorical ideas. Just understand this is not bulletproof. This does not represent everybody. It doesn't mean it's bad, wrong. But it's not the holy grail of everything. And the, the undermining and taking some people's opinions and not others, that's also been part of the process. That's okay. We're allowed to do that democratic process apparently. But let's just be really clear that this is, this isn't, this is gonna have some gaps in it. And if we're here discussing it, we're the ones that are the stakeholders here. We're the ones that are doing the work here. I just hope that we can hear what everybody's saying. I'm not wanting to be the sole voice of all this by any means. But to constantly congratulate ourselves, we're actually doing a disservice to the public.
So I feel compelled to lean in here and I, I certainly want to make sure that we have clear direction to move forward. I also recognize this is a public meeting and certainly our credibility as consultants is being questioned a bit in terms of this process. And we have reflected what the community that has shown up to provide us input. And we've gone through an iterative process to ensure that we are bringing to you what we believe is the draft that's reflective of that. We recognize you are making the decisions and we will take that feedback and we will revise this. I just want to make sure that I'm also being clear about, I don't believe there's been a time where we have not reflected the feedback, whether it is in agreement or not. This draft to us reflects what we've heard.
Cut you off.
Well, no, it, it is, it is one of the basic practices within libraries when they're building collections and when they're obviously putting stuff in, when they're shelving it.
And programs.
And programs, which things are, are, you know, you're putting toddler books in toddler area, you're putting adult geography and adult, that's just, that's a basic function that we're doing there that has, it isn't about deciding. We're categorizing it. We're not deciding if this is okay or not. We're not acting as parents. But when I see the words without restriction, that does concern me and how that can be used in a harmful way. And so again, I would, I would like to add something like, you know, at the same time, we're committed to safety and wellbeing of children and teens. Our collections and spaces for young people are curated with care, offering age appropriate materials that respect their developmental needs and sensitivities. That's very long, but something that captures something like that where we're not at all saying, hey, we're the parents, we're deciding. Also, you know, Olga on the board isn't deciding for you. I'm not saying that at all. But how intellectual freedom and child safety work hand in hand.
Are you suggesting that that would be in the glossary added to the?
Yes.
Glossary?
Not all of that, but something where we can put that into the consideration and expression of the word. Because in the last decade or so, there have been times when intellectual freedom was like the reference. And then, you know, people even picking up a paper saying, hey, this is, it's, that's, that's okay to do because we have intellectual freedom. It's been used in harmful, harmful ways. And so I just want to be sure that we are hedging it in a safe way that, in expressing that that has kids' safety in mind, but not overstepping obviously our professional boundaries.
Since this is a different type of document than like a policy for collection sorting, would it make a difference if we took off the without restriction for this part? For the, in the glossary I'm talking about, so in the glossary under intellectual freedom, if like without restriction was, and then like the rest, I feel like could go to policy committee maybe in the effort of, you know, keeping the meeting moving. But I don't want to not hear you, but would that kind of say what you're trying to say? Like.
I think that's okay unless to some people that really makes them feel like we're saying with restriction. Because I'm also concerned when it says, even when ideas may be controversial or unfamiliar.
If we don't. Restriction part goes, we already sort of restrict when we have different sections. So I think like removing with restriction would, we're doing that. I don't know.
We, I, I would. We don't restrict.
Yeah.
We organize information into age groups. We have children's and teens and adults. Right. But we don't really restrict, restrict like, you know, as a young prodigy, Kristy, if you would have come in and you've read everything in the children's area and you wanted to read teen, the library's not restricting. Back in the day, that was different, but that's not what we do. The parents, we expect are really guiding the children's habits. And so I guess that would be my only concern. But to put without restriction, like just in the sentence after information, I think it's still implied.
I think it's actually more correct because right now we're just talking about physical materials. We do have filtered internet and there's other
Yeah.
types of restriction that the library is providing for minors.
Strike that, that's.
And Irina has had her hand up for a really.
Oh, I'm sorry, Irina. Go ahead.
So my question, we always, a few questions. One of them is we're always talking about our parents can do this, parents can do that. First of all, I was very surprised that as a parent of teenager, I wasn't allowed in the teenager zone. So I understand it's for the safety of other teens.
Were you with the teen?
I came to the library with the teens.
Well, that doesn't sound right. So Irina, I would encourage you to reach out to Alicia and have a conversation about your experience.
Okay. So that's the one thing. And it was multiple times. So I know I understand it's from the point of view of other teens and kind of try to respect that, but it led to the experience of bringing home books that wasn't good for even those teens and younger siblings they had. That's the one.
And not just. I want to clarify this because there's a lot of people listening or will listen. If you are an adult and you come into a children's area or a teen area, you will be questioned about that because those are spaces we pay particular attention to. If you have a child with you, if you have a teen with you, you should be allowed in those spaces with your child. The Vancouver Community Library has, you know, a very large teen space. And it is true that teens use that space because it's all teens. But I think, I believe that that's where you go a lot, Irina. So that's probably the location we're talking about. So I encourage you to reach out to Alicia Gamori or anybody else listening, deputy director, to talk about your experience so that she can help coach staff.
So if a parent's in there looking at books without a child, they'll be asked to leave?
So I stepped in with the child. My child was at the computer at that moment and I was asked to leave.
Okay, so we will work on that. But it's unusual. You didn't finish. So thank you for asking that further.
Yeah.
So for example, teachers come in sometimes without, or you as a parent could go in without your child to pick up books. But you will and should be asked because we're trying to protect the children that are in there as well.
Yes. So the second thing is now the children have access from their schools to the Fort Vancouver Library where they don't have a parent next to them. And they checking out the books through the school ID. How are we gonna handle that?
Parents can opt out of that service with the schools if they don't want their children to have access. Or they also can work with their child on what they are checking out. You know, again, the library isn't there to be the parent. But yes, with the connect cards that we have with schools, children that have those connect cards are able to check out. I think it's three items. Is that right, anybody? Anybody here tell me? No? Well, you can look it up and tell me. We have librarians in the room. They'll find the answer. But the point is, is that yes, that provides access. But it's an opt-out program if you don't want your children participating.
So the schools automatically give your info to the library without parental permission and then they have to opt out if they went out?
Correct.
Shouldn't be the other way around where they opt in to give the information to the library?
That is not how it has worked anywhere in the country that I have been.
And.
And this is long before me, Kristy, but I'm just giving you.
It's interesting. I never thought about all that.
And the, the schools communicate with the parents of what is happening and what the program is.
And you can imagine that, you know, the whole class making projects like middle school and my kid not allowed to go and check out the books. Can you imagine the feeling of that child?
You mean because you would have not. Child to check it out?
Sorry, Irene, I'm not sure we followed that last part.
The, the feeling of seeing, to be single out, the feeling to be, you know, in a, in a whole class, in front of the whole class.
Yeah.
So that's kind of another thing that comes with those intellectual freedom.
So I think.
One more thing. The, sorry for taking so long.
No, you're fine.
We still have restrictions for the movies. We still have cataloging and kind of division for the movies. But we tried to remove that from the books. I'm not talking about censoring. I'm not talking about banning, but people who making movies, they kind of, kind of taking consideration. I know it's can be debatable, but at least they try. Shouldn't we try to do that?
No.
Okay, I'm done.
Well, well, there's a rating system of the movies. It's not us rating it. And then with the publishing of the books, when we create records, there are records that get, come with age recommendations. And that's how they're cataloged then in the organization of where they're placed. Most of the time, the organization and placement is correct. On occasion, there are books that have been challenged because, for example, it might live in the children's area and really the content is for a teen. And we've moved those collections. So it does happen that the records at times are not appropriate. But that is the exception, the minority. And to rate with age restriction collections, there's lots of issues around that. And certainly a topic for a different day. But an interesting one to have.
So to, to address that, that would be more of a policy collection thing.
Yeah.
Olga, I, I feel like I maybe cut you off, but we were talking about going through to see what we're going to be working on. And we stopped at without restriction, I think for under, in, in, oh my goodness, intellectual freedom. If we removed without restriction for this portion of the work, is that kind of, is that okay?
Yeah, I mean, that's good because I like, again, I like that definition, but again, as a parent, I'm considering how that impacts not just myself, but my children. And since there are no regulatory bodies for the rating of children's materials, because publishers are basically suggesting it. It's part of marketing. It's just part of like, you know, things that seem common sense. This is a board book for toddlers. This is, but there isn't necessarily like a body that, a, a group that completely goes across the field and, and rates all of this. So it's a little bit of an uncharted territory, it seems like still, and publishers have.
Library Congress that creates records and reviews items as well as, you know, OCLC with WorldCat where we get records from. There are bodies, but when you call it regulatory, not in the same fashion as movies.
Well, I, so I'm writing in the chat here, so I don't have more time. I'm curious if there's anything that we are doing to ensure young patrons are not exposed to content that may be harmful or inappropriate for their age within this intellectual freedom model. Is there anything that we do?
Other than age of materials, so children's materials go to children's, teen, adult, et cetera. Again, that is up to the parent to decide what is harmful and inappropriate. I mean, some of it goes to what we're curating. And would you, I, I guarantee there is something in our libraries to offend every single person in our service area.
Yeah.
That is us doing our job and providing intellectual freedom. So when you ask this question, I find it to be a little bit going back to what I was talking about. It's the parent's responsibility to guide their children's reading habits, listening habits, viewing habits. It's not the libraries. The library's job is to provide the diversity of information and ideas and access to them.
But more to your point, I think that's a policy.
Yeah.
That, that we're, we're.
Which is in our collection development.
Yeah, we're off target here, I think a bit.
So let's bring it back. I want to make sure you have all the questions you have answered. We were kind of going through piece by piece. Did we finish what you had in mind?
I had.
Oh, did you have something?
Sorry, you guys are tiny on a screen, so I can't tell if you're talking to me or not.
Oh, sorry. No, I'm talking to the consultants now.
I had four areas that had been brought up as potential concerns. I had four areas that had been brought up as potential concerns. Based on what I've heard, the definition of intellectual freedom would therefore allow for the word to remain under the values if that's incorrect. Please let me know.
Right, I would, I would like to have additional things added to that definition. That's where I stand right now.
Okay, could you make sure, Olga, to send me those so that, what you were reading, could you send me that?
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Outside of intellectual freedom, equitable access, advancing equity and hub were the other areas. Is there any other word that we need to be refining? That has not already been discussed or a definition that we should be refining?
Well, to praise you, operational excellence. I really like the wording of that. Fostering a culture of learning, accountability and continuous improvement that unites our staff, systems and spaces to deliver exceptional service and lasting impact. Yes, like that one. I like your spaces and technology. The wording on that one is also very good and right, spot on.
All right, thank you. So what we will do next is we will, obviously we have a meeting with the NCAC on Wednesday afternoon. We will be talking about where we are and some of these words will be highlighted. I assume we'll try to get some feedback. And then we will be building out the goals, objectives and measurements that support these priorities and be bringing the whole package back to you at the December board meeting. At the board committee meetings in December, Point North and Group Four will come to our committee meetings to discuss all of the plans in preparation for the full package coming to the board in December.
Good, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. And I just want to say, it's good that we get to have this dialogue and it's good that we get to have disagreements and agreements come together. If we were just patting ourselves on the back and moving through this without any discussion, that would actually be a real big disservice to our community. So thank you, everybody, for handling this so well.
Thank you. Next up is the.